Today's April 17th, it's Planning Board meeting at 6:33 Memorial Town Hall. Robert Wagner Chairman, Paul Dostal Alternate Chairman, Administrative Supports Wilma Davis. I'm chairing the meeting tonight, Mr. Wagner's out of town. We have Mr. Mike Poschek, Mr. Paul Labby, members of the Planning Board. Purpose of tonight's hearing, meeting is to discuss our, some current zoning bylaws and some amendments to our bylaws that we've, that had been written, one of them, open space development, which was written before. We also created an accessory dwelling unit, floodplain overlay, and expedited permitting. So these have been in the works for several months, and tonight, we're going to discuss those and decide if they should go forward to our town meeting. We're not gonna, we're not taking any type of vote, only, only the fact that they are going to go and be put on our, tonight's ballot, or the town ballot, which is for the annual town meeting. So we will, if you haven't signed in, for those who have come in later, we have a signup We also have Becky Bash from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who was very instrumental in helping the town of Hatfield in helping us update these, in writing these, like especially the Hatfield accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So we're gonna go through each one and, and talk about it. So the first one was open space development. We had a bylaw, the town of Hatfield has a bylaw, and it was written a number of years ago. And so now with sprawl development and problems that Massachusetts communities were facing, we thought it would be a good time to, to update our bylaw and revise it and make it a little bit more attractive to developers and those who are interested. The town of Hatfield has had, since we've had this bylaw, we've only had one individual come forward a couple of years ago and actually apply for the open space development. It was like a one-house sub-development, if you will, and they, it was a very, very long process, but we got through it, and that's the only one we've, we've had. And I don't know if it's just because that nobody really wants to do it or has thought about it, but someone wanted to develop some, some land in the west, in west Hatfield and, and keep that open space going. So I'll just, we have a fact sheet, if you didn't get one, if you'd like one, we have some up here. So the proposed changes were, it was, it was currently a by right in the town center, agricultural areas, rural residential, and outlying residential districts. This proposal will make the open space development a standard form of residential subdivision development for all, for all projects that create three or more lots or units in the same districts. Our applicants may request a waiver from the Planning Board in favor of a standard subdivision, and we can request developers, developments of fewer than three lots, if the lots contain resources of historical, cultural, or environmental value. Another key, key element of this was that it reduces the minimum lot sizes in open space development, removes the internal frontage and average lot size requirements. So these changes, some of the highlights, they, they do not conflict with the Title V Septic System requirements. All subdivisions must comply with Board of Health regulations. Overall, density allowed in the open space development is no greater than what is normally allowed in the district. No internal frontage or average lot size requirements allowed for flexible design. And frontage requirements along existing public rights of ways remain the same as for underlying zoning, maintaining our traditional rural, rural character. So that, that would be, for instance, like our 200 feet, our 200, our current requirement of 200 feet of frontage. Another, another change was allowing select density bonuses. So in order to promote the objective of this bylaw, the Planning Board may award a density bonus to increase the number of dwelling units beyond the normal allowable density in an, in an over, open space development plan by up to 20%. So a density bonus is, could be as, as follows. 5% density bonus for every additional 10% of the site, over and above the required 50% preserved in open space. 10% density bonus for every additional 10% of agricultural land, over and above required 50% preserved in open space. One additional unit for every one dwelling unit restricted in perpetuity to occupancy by either moderate, moderate income households or, or a low-income household. One additional unit for every historic structure approved by such, as such by the Hatfield Historical Commission, preserved and subject to historic preservation restrictions by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So none of this was in our current zoning bylaw. We also, another, another change was increasing the open space requirements. Proposal increases the amount of open space required, open space from 40% to 50%. This does not affect achievable density as per the reduction in minimum lot sizes in rural residential or town center districts. So on the back, there's a couple of examples where a standard subdivision with 60,000 square foot lots would look something like, in Figure A, and Figure B with 30,000 square foot lots, and you're preserving 50% of the open space. We haven't had any, any big development, developments in Hatfield, and I'm not sure how long, you know, Mr. Labby, you've been here for a long time. If we've had any large...
Nothing, really. Plantation Road, I think, was the last somewhat large development, and Colonial Acres was just before that, so that was it. We've had, had some spurs off, you know, some cul-de-sac stuff, five or six lots, but nothing big, you know, it just, it just isn't here. The, the money doesn't work. If you start to buy and develop a piece of land to get there and put the, the hardtop in and all the other stuff, by the time you get to the end, the houses are out of the buying public. So it's hard to get someone in the construction field to come in here and invest money into building the houses, and then get to the point where holy cats, nobody can afford to buy them. So we're, we worked hard on this. I, I was on a committee for, I forget, 14 or 15 months on somebody, Hatfield accessory dwelling unit stuff, which we're gonna talk about, but the open space stuff is pretty hard to make money on it, and people just don't want to do it.
So there were some other minor changes. Detailed requirements of the protection of the common open space area should be a homeowner's association, should a homeowner's association become the owner? In the event of, okay, what, what that means is, in the event that the ownership of the land will remain with the homeowners in, in the open space development, a nonprofit homeowner's association should be, shall be established. This proposal detours, details more explicitly on how that ownership shall be structured and maintained. Adds open space, adds the open space committee and the agriculture advisory committee to the list of authorized review committees. As their purview aligns with the goals of this bylaw, the proposal adds the open space committee and agricultural advisory committees to the list of the boards and committees authorized to provide their recommendations regarding applications for OSD. Currently, we, I think that last, the one open space committee that we did do, they, they did not get involved at all. No, I don't even, I think we had the, maybe just the Conservation Commission, but...
The tap dance to get from point A to the end result was phenomenal, and some of this clears some of that up, so they can get there easier. So it gives us a possibility of developing some stuff.
The last change, it reorganized existing structures of the current bylaw. Proposal reorganizes the structure of the bylaw for easier reading and interpretation, and to streamline the flow of information. In addition to reorganizing existing sections, proposal adds the following sections: definitions, applicability, application requirements, but they were basically no different from standard application requirements, but we updated a few things there. So I don't know if anybody has, have any questions about this particular bylaw? It's kind of a housekeeping task and, and coordinating with the Pioneer Valley Commission. Becky, would you like to add anything in regards to this update for us?
I just wanted to point out, and I think you, you, you did mention this, is that the, the amount of open space to be preserved is 50% instead of 40%, and, but the actual number of lots is the same as what would be allowed in a, a standard subdivision, because the, the minimum lot size for town center and rural residential was reduced to, to half of what, of the minimum lot size of a standard subdivision. So it actually makes it, you know, pretty much the same number of lots, or the same number of lots, and even additional lots with the density bonuses. So there's a little more incentive, and it's also required by right, so, or but required now for any subdivision over three, three lots.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
One question, Paul. About the, with the open space, that who maintains that and who's? You say it's up to one of the, wherever the boards...
The homeowners association.
Cultural advisory committee, but who determines, who is actually going to? Is it going to be all the homeowners?
I would think they would, they would have a, if they would, they would...
Is this a set policy? Is this what you're saying?
Well, I think that would have to be, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, the homeowners association would, would delineate the responsibilities.
You're saying that you have to have a homeowner's association?
Or, or...
It doesn't explicitly, explicitly say that, but...
Or it can be owned by a land trust or an individual, it says in the, in the bylaw.
So we need to spell that out in here about...
I think it is spelled out. Yeah, it's, let's see, it's near the back. Yeah, in...
Homeowners association, okay, here we go.
Yeah, the common open space requirements, and then it has land protection methods, so it says the land shall be owned by a nonprofit land trust or conservation organization, homeowners association, or individual, and a permanent conservation easement or deed restriction must be conveyed to the town. And then it, it goes on to describe what the homeowners association...
It means that determination, I guess.
Well, it's a requirement. Yeah, it's a developer, you know, has to propose what's, who's gonna be maintaining the open space. So whether they work with a land trust, or they develop a homeowners association, or a, you know...
But is that anything said in stone here?
Yeah, yeah, it has to be one of those.
But you can't just be hanging out there, Don. There's gotta be some kind of a group watching this, one person, if it's an owner or whatever. It just can't be just hanging out there as a, you know...
Yeah, we have a, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, under the definition of homeowners association, so private, our, our definition is a, a private nonprofit organization, corporation, association, or other legal entity established by the developer to manage, maintain, support, and finance the common facilities, common open space of, of an, of an open space development, and to enforce certain covenants and restrictions. And that, under...
That's 6.2.2.
Where is it? Yeah, and then, yeah, there's a...
More towards the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
Oh, that, okay. The applicant shall make a conditional grant to the town of Hatfield, this is what we're talking about, binding upon the homeowners association of the fee interest to all and supposed to, open space to be conveyed to the homeowners association.
Under what...
Such offer may be accepted by, may be accepted by the town of Hatfield at discretion of the board selecting, upon the failure of the homeowners association to take, title to the open space, when, you know, and, or upon, et cetera, et cetera, upon failure of the homeowners association, homeowners association to fulfill its maintenance obligations under, hereunder, to pay its real property, pay its taxes, but...
Yeah, it says, yeah, the, the homeowners association has responsibility in perpetuity for liability insurance, property tax, and permanent maintenance of all common lands.
Yeah, so it is covered in there.
So it sounds pretty binding.
Any other questions? Yes?
So, Paul, Mike, is this, is my understanding that, that this replaces the current subdivision by zoning that we have, or is this optional, like it was in our original master plan?
It, they can do either or.
They can do either or.
Well, it's, it's required for over, for three or more lots.
Okay.
Three or more lots?
But they can still do a, a traditional...
Standard subdivision.
Right.
A subdivision.
You get a waiver.
Yeah.
You can get a waiver.
It's not replacing, yeah.
You can get a wa, a waiver to doing this, not to doing a subdivision.
Yeah.
To doing an open space subdivision.
Right, meaning a traditional subdivision, like, has been done for the last 10, 15 years, whatever, since the master plan. That's still in effect. But you're, in my understanding, that if there's three or more, you are required to do this?
In, in the four zoning districts, so it's in rural residential, outlying residential, town center, and agricultural districts.
That's basically the town. You're right. I mean, come on, okay, can we strike that? This should be optional, it really should. I mean, it's a nice idea, and I get it, but try to find somebody to hate a field, okay, around here. I've got four acres, I can't find, I have a hell of a time getting a farmer to do it. It's too small, there aren't interest, okay? I get it, this is a nice idea, but realistically, when I think of the, the project up on Elm Street there, which has 50 units, I mean, they don't have any of this, but then you drop down to the Bowls, and there's a big field in the front, and he can't get that done, and it's just kind of an eyesore, okay? So, and you can't, they can't use it for anything, like a playground or anything like that.
They wanted, they want, when they developed the Bowls project, they wanted that field in there. That's what...
Well, you guys kind of pushed it, Tony.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's be honest.
And, and they wanted trees planted, and they wanted a, they wanted a field, and he was agreeable.
I think, look, you know, I like the fact that the language makes things clear. There's also cluster development that nobody's used, right, which is where you traded off open space someplace else, so you could build better, closer density, and that's not, that's still there, right? That's still an option, right? Or is this taking over all of that? No?
Still here, this is just...
Okay, so I think, can we strike the language of, you know, required, okay? And just, you know, maybe, maybe, possibly by making the language clearer and having clearer options, it'll attract more in the future development as, you know, as a carrot rather than a stick, is where I'm going.
Where do you go, where do you lie on that, Becky?
I, I think the point of making this a requirement is that, you know, development's coming, and, and open space is, is very important to the town, and the idea of the, of sort of, of doing reduced lot sizes is it makes it a more economical development, so there's less roads to maintain, you know, less property to maintain by the homeowners, you know, there's one, one big open space property, so it adds to, you know, it could add to recreation land, it could add to farmland, but I think, I think the point of this was to really preserve, you know, the natural resources and agricultural land that the town has, and if, if there's a, a lot, you know, that, it sounds like you're talking about a small, a smaller subdivision where if, if the land isn't, you know, if the planning board finds that that land isn't valuable, or, or, you know, there's no one to maintain it, then I think the property owner could apply for a waiver, but I think the point of this is really to, to create some, some nice developments and to preserve as much open space as possible, because, you know, you may have not have had many developments recently, but, but it's likely coming, and, you know, as, as the metropolitan areas expand.
Okay, let's, let's play on that a little bit. If this is positive, it will attract that type of development. If you're trading lot size, and I guess you're not trading frontage though, right?
No.
Okay, but if you don't trade frontage, I mean, that's kind of not really a gift. Okay, so we're still having 200 feet of frontage.
Well, no, it's, it's only, it's...
You're not dropping it much more below 30,000 from 45, right?
It's 200 feet of frontage on the main road, but on the interior road, there are no frontage requirements.
Yeah.
So that, that's what makes it a little more flexible.
So if you punch the road in there, that doesn't have to be 200, 200, if you have, say, three houses, each one does not have to have 200.
Okay, is there any minimums other than the state, which I think is 50 feet?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I don't think we addressed that. I don't know, hey, don't we?
Technically, the state law says what, 50 feet of frontage?
55.
And, okay, and 50, 15 foot sidelines, right?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a...
That's Hatfield, 15 foot sideline.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just trying to see if, if this is a good idea, more carrot, less stick, is what I'm really saying here. You do it that way, and you make it very attractive to a developer in a sense that you're now trying to keep more open space, but I think you need more carrot to make it work. Fair enough?
We, we've spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, this is...
Well, can I just say this, Paul?
Yes.
I've been out in the hall looking for information.
Uh huh.
It hasn't been out there. There's no, none of this has been out there. There's no, on the website, I've been looking for PDFs, nothing. So if you say you've been working on it so hard, why aren't you making it more public available? Seriously?
As far as I know, every meeting that we've had, it's been posted.
Oh, I get it, but some of us can't make all the meetings, right? And, and granted, if you have PDFs out there, we can look at it at our leisure. Yes, there's YouTube, does everybody yet YouTube? Certainly not, not everybody is, is internet savvy, but they could go in the town hall and pick this information up, why wasn't it out there?
This was just done for tonight.
Okay, so granted, so we're, this is a hearing to talk about how we go forward. Perhaps, perhaps, the better approach might be, it's been what, 18 years since we've had a master plan that we've looked at, maybe you want to go back and start doing it that way. I don't think you have enough time to get the public ready for an annual town meeting with this sort of thing, and I think fine tuning it would be nice, you know, to make...
We thought it was pretty fine tuned.
Okay, I would fine tune it some more.
Okay, well, I'm, 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 I'm in favor of, of, maybe we need to talk, we can talk about it at the town meeting, I mean, but this was probably a, a time to, to talk about it before, when we have, we've had, we've had different, we had a grant, we had, we had meetings to talk about this, and it's, and it's like a, a number of other meetings that this town has had, nobody shows up, no one knows anything about anything, and then, then when it gets to town hall, they go, where's everybody been? And they have not come forward, they haven't come to meetings, and, and they want to know, why are we doing this now?
Okay, you had a grant, that's why you did it. But I, I sympathize with you on the town government committee, we had a hell of a time getting our PDF on the website, it took months, okay, because people were wondering what the result of our report was, you know, and, and just a few, a month or two ago, all of a sudden, they're thinking the report is incomplete. I hear your frustration and so on, but that doesn't mean that we should ram this forward either.
So I guess we have, we have an option then, we can, we can keep working on this, but I, I think our grant is up, right?
Yeah, true.
And this is, this is the, this is the finished product.
Yeah, but if you have to tweak it, we, we are subscribers to PBBC, right? We pay an, an annual dues, we can get more work done.
You can apply, you can apply for local technical assistance.
We have to apply for another grant.
Could do that too, and maybe throw some more things in, and maybe, maybe it's time for a master plan again. Sounds like it, things have changed.
Well, that's, I bet's another, that's another thing, what do you, what do you guys?
Another master plan, holy crap.
What do you think we shot, Marlene?
Can I say something? I just happen to have an excerpt here from the town's master plan, and in what the Planning Board has been reviewing is, is recommended, it is referenced in the master plan. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it is identified in the master plan to look at what you are doing this evening regarding the open space development.
Any other further discussion? All right, I'm gonna close the discussion on this, and the, the Planning Board's gonna make a decision whether we move this forward to the town meeting, or table it and continue to work on it. What do you guys think?
I think we've done, we've done a lot of work on this, and perhaps, I, I would, I would recommend we move it ahead to town meeting, the only thing is, is that, you know, will we have an opportunity to fully discuss this at town meeting, and not just have one or two questions and then have to move on to another topic? This, this is pretty substantial.
Are you making a motion?
No, I think we're just discussing.
Oh, just discussing, okay.
He'd like to see it move forward.
Yeah, I would too, I would like to see it go forward. There's been such amount of time spent and everything, and I don't think, what I think, Chris, is you're, you're, you're stopping it at a certain point. I think the point is open, it's the developer that's gonna have to look and find that pigeon hole of what he wants to do, okay? It's like when what's-his-name built the, on Buster's place there, I mean, the developer had to find out where the hell he was going, and then got it going. So this open space thing was Mrs. Mazick. We went through the whole thing with her to come up with, she had a daughter and somebody else, there was like the ookoo boodles of acres, right? And they only wanted three building lots, or four building lots, or whatever. So we went through it, and as we stumbled through it, we found that it needed to be cleaned up, hence Becky coming in and cleaning up, you know, and there's been a lot of cleanup as we went along, words and sentences and everything changed. I think it's for the good of the town to go along with this and bring it up in the town meeting, if you'd like, I mean, it's, it's a, it will be open on the floor there, but I think we've got to move it forward, just to get it out there, you know?
Okay, that's fair, Paul, but why limited, why make it a requirement over three, three units? Is that, why couldn't we just make it optional like it is current? I mean, Mazick was the only one that, that took a, took a, any effort with this, in what, uh... I mean, Mazick was the only one that, that took a, took a, any effort with this in what, eighteen years? I mean, yeah, yeah. Okay, so by doing this, you're, you're essentially saying, this isn't, uh, this isn't common with what the developments we've had going on. In town over this eighteen year period. This is only one of them. Okay, so you're, you're essentially making a radical situation, a change in subdivisions going forward. I'm still, okay, if you want to push this going forward and you think the language is pretty good here and so on, and. And I, I'm not against maintaining open space. I just like, think the idea here is to make it somewhat mandatory is sort of extreme. Leave this, if it's good, if it's, if it's attractive, it'll sell itself. So don't say every, anybody going over three has to do this. That's all. Can you do that? Can you modify that piece? It's a little simple sentence, you know, whatever, I don't know where it is in here, but, because I couldn't get one in the hall.
Well, I don't know why the information wasn't out there, but.
Okay. So wherever it is, I'm just suggesting, could we do that? Why couldn't we do that? I think it would be much more accepted if you did.
I, I'm in favor of also putting this on the, going, getting it on the, the warrant. And if it gets, gets passed, then we can still make modifications to it. Or if it doesn't get passed, then it goes on next year's warrant. So, but I mean, I think, I think we, we spent money for the grant, we've had a, an individual from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that's put in a lot of work. We've had a number of meetings on it, and I think it's, I think it, uh, I think it should go to the town floor, let the voters decide. That's my, my thoughts.
I agree.
So, um, with that, do we have a motion?
Yeah, you want, are you going to make the motion? Did you make it?
I will move that we, um.
We're not, we're not, we're not voting that this is going to be cast in stone, we're just moving it to go on to the warrant.
On it, down to the warrant.
Are we, are, will this be on the warrant? Will it say? What's the terminology? They'll say proposed by the planning board, but recommended by the planning board?
Yes. Well, what, what, it'll, yeah.
Is that what it is, Marlene?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would make the motion that we move this to the warrant for this Hatfield Open Space Development Bylaw Revision. Move it to the annual town meeting, uh, for the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it carries.
Do you have this big packet?
Yeah, I grabbed one.
Okay. Is it everybody that wants one?
Can I just make a request then? Since you've done this, put it up on the webpage, please, so we can, we can read it. Okay, and see, you know, everybody gets a shot at it. Because that's a lot of stuff. That's a lot. I mean, what is that? Fifty, forty pages here of stuff? I mean.
Next topic. This is a proposed bylaw. Section six point oh is an accessory dwelling unit. Hatfield has, did not have, uh, any type of accessory apartment by law in the, under the town of Hatfield. What, what many people were doing that we were converting a single family to a two family. We've had, we're having, we're seeing more requests. Or we're finding out that as the population is aging, that some people would like to have. Their, their mom or their dad living in the house with, with the same family. And, uh, we really didn't have anything that incorporated a, a, a mother-in-law apartment, if you will. And, uh, with its own sleeping, cooking, bathroom, and a, and a separate means of, of egress. There, there, we know that there are some in town that have been, that have been built over the years, or they bought a house and it was there and nobody said anything. But, uh, we've, we've had a number of people that have come forward and. The only, only thing that we had in our laws was to convert it from a single family to a two family. So we're hoping that this will, uh, ease that, that problem that we have. So we have a fact sheet regarding, uh, an accessory apartment by law. Would include accessory apartments that are contained within an existing structure will be allowed by right in all districts. Accessory apartments that are attached to an existing, existing primary dwelling unit but require structural modifications. Or expansion to the primary dwelling may be authorized through a special permit. Could be an addition, may be added to the original building through a special permit. As long as it does not increase the floor space of the original building by more than fifty percent of the existing residential space. Only one accessory apartment may be created on a single family lot. So, uh. We're not going to have two apartments or three apartments. It's going to be a main house and then a, uh, an apartment. The owner of the residence in which the accessory apartment is located must occupy at least one unit of the dwelling units on the property. The accessory apartment must be a subordinate part of the single family dwelling. And should be no greater than one hundred percent of the existing total residential space or nine hundred square feet, which is, whichever is less. Accessory apartment may have no more than two bed, two bedrooms. Another change that we discussed, the planning board may review accessory apartments built during ten years prior to adoption of this bylaw. To conform that they comply with state building code. We're not going to go back and, and go to everybody's house that has a, maybe a, a mother-in-law type apartment and, and look at it. If they were to apply for a building permit for, for something, and the building inspector goes there and sees that they have an accessory apartment and, and something's not up to code. He may, he will require them to, to get it up to code. So, uh. I guess I had this backwards, but, uh. The purpose of this particular bylaw, again, is to provide older homeowners with the means of obtaining rental income, companionship, security services via tenants. And accessory apartments thereby enable them to stay in their homes and neighborhoods which they might otherwise be forced to leave. Add, add more affordable rental units to our housing stock. This is, uh, the committee that Mr. Labby was on. We determined that our, uh, our available rental, or, well, that was more rental and low income.
Well, ten percent of your stock within the town should be in low-income housing. Okay. We were sadly way down in the numbers, probably three percent or four percent. This way, when we did the mother-in-law apartment situation, it didn't give us the access to that to be presented to the state as another unit. Okay? When, with this, we, they started out talking five feet apart. I didn't buy that at all. That's either attached or forget it. We're not going to get involved in somebody putting up this house and that house, and then all of a sudden somebody says, well, we're going to condo this part, and that's going to be, that, that's not what it's built for. It's built for us all folks that want to stay in Hatfield and, uh. Have an apartment, but be able to rent an apartment in there. And it will qualify, I talked with Becky prior to the meeting, and some of them will qualify, some of them won't. But it will help in getting us to that number. And it was, it was a long drawn out, you know, I think I went to fourteen or fifteen, sixteen meetings over the course of a year, year and a half. And this wasn't the only thing that we talked about. But it was, you, you got to get moving in some direction with the state, that you're doing something. And this was one of the, one of the ways to get there.
Paul, any idea if, when this is adopted, what the numbers were changing, are we, what, at three percent, four?
Yeah, we're, we're way down there, we got, got a, we got a long way to go. And we, everything we do, everything we try to do here is that to get one more unit that would qualify as low income. And the developer, the builder stands there and he laughs at you, see, you know, it's going to cost me the same amount of money to build that, that unit. As it is building this unit. So it's really difficult to come up with the damn answer. I understand your question, the answers are hard to come up. You got to get somebody that's interested in the first place, that will listen to you.
So are you saying essentially the grandfather units that exist don't count now? Is that what you're saying? And that by passing this, they would?
No, no, some will and some won't, yeah. It's dependent on how it's structured, like before, you could put an accessory unit in there, but if you didn't have a kitchen. Okay? You could call it involved in the house. But if you had a kitchen, it was in a complete, two-family, okay? And we fought, didn't fight it, but we argued with a lady that, well, don't put a kitchen in. Because we're not going to come around and check on you. You know, you got a hot plate, you, you say you have breakfast with your family, you have lunch with your family. It, it's, it's just kind of to give it a way to go, a pigeonhole to get there. Okay? That they can be there and not call it a two-family.
Right.
Okay?
Well, and there are plenty of situations.
Oh, the whole, the whole street, Main Street was that from day one, when it, when the town was developed. They always had somebody up in the back apartment.
We didn't call them two-family.
No, right, right. But then we got, then we got smart.
That's why I was wondering if by putting it in, and essentially, uh, saying this is an actual use that's in the bylaw. Wouldn't that increase our stock? But you're saying, what would be the test when it wouldn't?
I don't know, I can't, I can't tell you what the test is, okay? But there are some requirements that fit, that would let it go, let us, give us, give us some percentage, okay? And some of them won't, but I don't know what they are, I don't.
Yeah, I think to be eligible for the low income or low to moderate income, it has to be, you know, you have to. Get people's income records and, and have something that says this is an apartment for low to moderate income people. And then it can be added to your affordable housing stock.
There's a lot of steps to get there.
Yeah.
You, you know, you can't just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like you could just put it in a box and say, this is it. It's, it's a pigeonhole, this one requires this, and if you have this, this require, you know, it's a, it's like everything else in the state, you know? You got to really keep dropping them down and then you finally fall in. But it, you can't start it from the beginning, you got to start from back here. It's, it's a tough situation, Chris, it really is. And we've been, we've been fighting, I mean, there was twelve, I think, on that committee. And, uh, we didn't come up with a good answer after, you know, sixteen or eighteen months of meetings and, and, uh. You got to, you got to start to see if you can even break it apart. But with land so valuable in Hatfield and building lots so valuable in Hatfield, it's hard to come up with. That you, it's the guy across the street here, we asked him to try to get one apartment for, uh, low income and he's just, are you crazy? With what, with what I got to put in over there to get the condos, how can I possibly come up with a low-income condo? Yeah, you can't.
No, this is so, Becky, back to what you were saying, uh, the only way to get the tally would be when the assessors put out, uh, when they're doing full measure and list. To, uh, have people report, and a lot of people don't, report that they have a mother-in-law apartment essentially. Is that what we're, that would help, as Paul says, with the tally?
Well, it, it'll.
To the low income, right?
Yeah, well, I think the low, to actually be qualified for low income, it has to be, you know, available to low and moderate income households.
Would that be based on the rental or not? The rental amount?
Well, yeah, based on the rental amount, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure of the, of the, you know, the steps you have to go through.
When the assessors do it, they ask for income information.
Right, right, yeah.
I just curious. All right.
The other thing that, that's to this is, is this is, this is not going to be a separate, so. So for example, if you have a barn behind your house and it's not attached, you're not going to be allowed to, to put an accessory apartment in there.
Right.
It's, this, this is going to be attached to the main dwelling if you're, if that's the manner that you're going in. I think there's actually a picture on here, somebody attached it. Or it's going to be internal to the existing, existing structure.
Well, the first blush was five feet, and no, no, that's not, we don't want to do that. Five feet apart, okay? Like we got involved in the Chestnut Street thing, remember the guy said, I'd like to build it, I'd like to attach it, but I'd like to have it five feet apart. No, that's not attaching it, you got it attached to the structure, you know?
So that we don't end up with two houses on one lot.
Two houses on one lot, and then all of a sudden somebody sold it, like, you know, bingo.
We're not going to be able to pound up a two-by-four and say it's continuous.
No, right, that's right. That's, that's, yeah, no, you can't just attach this.
Protect, the other, other, a couple of other things here that we, I didn't talk about, was basically protecting the stability, property values. Residential character of the neighborhood by ensuring that accessory apartments are installed only in owner-occupied houses. So the owner has to live in the house so that we don't run into, like a lot of situations, what's happened in Hadley, happened in, it's happened in Amherst. That just whole streets have been, over the years have gone up and they're all rentals. And then there's an apartment on an apartment and, uh.
Well, I, I recall the meeting when the lady was in here. And the neighbors came and they were concerned about that issue.
Right, right.
So this, with the owner occupied, that should, that should qualify.
Right, that's right.
And that's going to be part, part of the deed. So that when the, when the, if that. The mother-in-law or father-in-law moves on and they decide they want to, they, they want to sell the house, they're not going to be allowed to.
Make it a two-family.
Make it a two-family.
Yeah.
So it's, if people have to think about what they're going to do. So, uh, any other questions, any other discussion from the?
I guess, you didn't cover this, Paul, but this doesn't affect our parking requirements then?
We, we talked about the, uh, the parking and, uh, we left it the same. As our current, whatever's in the, in our zoning laws currently. We talked about changing it, and I, I think we're, we, we may have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. Whether they have a, you know, some people have like a two or three-car garage and big driveway, small driveway, so we decided, um. Actually, I, I'm not sure if I was at that meeting.
No, it was decided to remain the same with the zoning that we have now, yeah, you know?
You can apply for a waiver.
You can apply for a waiver, but you got two and two, so you have to have four.
Right.
Okay?
And a guest.
A guest, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Six.
Yeah.
Technically.
Yeah.
There was, there was something in the parking requirements where if you, if it was an elderly unit, it could only, you could allow just one space, but that was.
Hundred fifty-five.
Yeah.
But, but, uh, I, I also thought that we, we felt that if, if your, if your elderly parents are coming to live with you. They're probably not going to have two or three cars, they may only have one car, you know, at that point. Or, or no car, but, uh, that we decided to leave it like it is and then do it on a case-by-case.
So if you're saying in the language, Becky, is there, you do have the waiver option?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's more in the actual proposed bylaw. If you read that, then just in this.
Is that in this?
In, in the summations. Yeah. It's in there, yes.
Oh, I see.
There's more in there, besides just the some, summaries.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the, from the audience? Okay, uh.
Motion?
We have a motion to, uh, move the accessory apartment bylaw to the, to the town, for, to, to put on the town warrant for the annual town meeting.
Go move.
Second?
Second, we have a, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Where's my next?
Flood plane, flood plane.
The next one is section 2.4, Flood Plane Overlay District. This was a follow-up to the Planning Board Regarding National Flood Insurance Program and Recommendations to Amend Our Flood Plane Overlay District of the Zoning Bylaws.
What was it, Marlene? Some of the stuff wasn't in there? And this is kind of a housekeeping issue to catch up?
Yeah. Misrepresented, actually, the language in there is being replaced with the language pursuant to the state's requirements. We had a meeting with the Director of the National Flood Hazard Management Program, Joy DePoe, and we reviewed the sections that she had recommended and leave memo addressed to the planning board in March 28th. Recommends what should be struck or added.
But it's more or less to just get in line with the state.
Pretty much. And will comply with the National Flood Hazard Management Program.
So basically, updating this, as Marlene had stated, to reflect the current language in the National Flood, Flood Insurance Program and Flood Plane Over, Over District and the recommendations from the Director of the National Flood Hazard Management Program. So we're gonna add, add it, renumber it. There's some renumbering and striking, like in section 2.41, whatever language, the language that we had in there and putting it in with the, the updated version of what, what the Federal Emergency Management Agency had recommended. Base, I'm not gonna read all of them, but they're listed in here. So there's quite a few language changes and to comply with the, with the existing laws. And renumbering the the sections in here to make it more easier to read and updated.
Bob and I will review the Flood Plane Overlay District. We had noticed that the sequence was not in order, so we felt it was necessary to, to, you know, renumber it correctly. But basically, the changes are under 2.4.1 district delineation, 2.4.1 development regulations, and 2.4.1 special permit requirements in the Flood Plane District. And 2.4.9 special permit criteria and decision. So there's some, some language that we, you know, we strike concerning what the state has recommended.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, Marlene, there'll be a cleaned-up version of this by town meeting?
Yes. Basically, what you have in front of you, if you're looking at the March 28th note,
Right, right.
That will be, be added
Okay.
to the, to the article.
Okay.
And of course, I'll be reviewing that with town council, so it could be something to change.
Any, any questions or discussion from the audience? Okay, do we have a motion to update the Flood Plane Overlay District? It's basically, again, a housekeeping-
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I wanted to say, a housekeeping exercise to get the current language and current, current definitions and renumbering sequence. So we have a motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Expedited permitting.
Next section is chapter, part of, with the zoning bylaws, chapter 43, 43D expedited permitting. In 19, in 2014, we accepted the provisions of chapter 43 expedited permitting, but the town did not follow the required steps before accepting it, and therefore it was not a binding vote. So we have to add several components, which was accept the provisions of 43D expedited permitting, amend the zoning bylaws to implement it, implement it, expedited permitting, and identify and designate priority development sites. Our further communication with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in 2015 upon learning this information, a redevelopment authority was charged with the task of identifying potential development sites. Since much time has passed, the town was reminded that we have not completed the process. The goal is to work toward implementing for this year's town meeting. So there was a memo that was sent out March 11th and designate priority development sites pursuant to mass general laws in chapter 43D in the expedited permitted program. Stible Eltron, a worldwide company in developing and manufacturing energy, is interested in developing property on 99 West Street. This parcel was zoned light industrial, and they wanna construct a new building out there. And they also wanna propose to develop the back portion, which was zoned residential, to create solar units. So that's part of the problem that we had here. Where's my? I don't have any notes on that.
No, I think that pretty much covered it.
See, I, did we, Marlene, did we? This thing about the redevelopment authority, did we have, is that in the works?
So, where we are, the town was, had knowledge of a couple of parcels that could potentially be developed. However, you have to qualify for the PDS, the Priority Development Site Designation. Two of the parcels don't qualify. And then one piece does, which is 99 West Street.
So that's, that's the only one then?
Correct. At this time, that is the only one that has been identified. The owner has submitted a written acknowledgement, accepting that designation approval. It does require a town meeting approval, so the article on the town meeting warrant will do three things. Accept the provision of chapter 43D, implement, amend the zoning bylaws to implement chapter 43D expedited permitting, and identify a priority development site, which would be 99 West Street.
Chris, you had some comments?
Yeah. I've been on the HRA since 2015. We weren't tasked with anything. So that's, you should strike that out. I'd like, and I checked with our chair.
Well, that's not part of the article anyway.
Well, but I'm just saying that's-
I am aware that the Board of Selectmen did, did meet with the redevelopment authorities several years ago.
Yeah, but we weren't, we weren't tasked with any of this. But that just, but to understand the 43D, that's, that's for older buildings that are over 50,000 square feet. That's a large building. And we don't have any, anything abandoned of that nature. I don't think the Center School was even half that. So, you know, just, so let's just cover that. And then the lots where it could go. I think that we, we had identified in 2006, there is a study done at that time under the Industrial Development Commission that I was on at that time. Catherine, last name begins with an R.
Rattay.
Thank you. Did that study and it's here. And that identified sites for large industrial and light and smaller. And so that study was available, and I don't know why, you know, did, so regardless, apparently Steeble has finally decided to get around to this. So we should move ahead, sure. I mean, why not? Certainly 135,000 square feet is over 50.
I just wanna mention, under the criteria, this must be eligible for the development or redevelopment of a building of at least 50,000 square feet of gross floor area. And it may include existing structures and contiguous buildings.
Right.
Okay.
And we don't have too many of those.
No.
That aren't currently in use, let me know that way. So.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm returning to Rattay. I didn't know if you had anything else.
No, I don't have anything else. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to move this along to town meeting as well.
Seconding. Okay, we have a motion to move it to the town meeting for the annual warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's curious. So these, these, one, two, three, four zoning bylaw amendments will be put forward on the, on the town, town warrant will be voted upon on, when's the meeting, May?
May 14th.
May 14th? All right. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thanks for your input. That concludes the discussions on zoning bylaws. Jonathan Murray is here to discuss informal discussion with a property at 77 West Street by USA Waste. So you can come up or you can tell us what, what's going on. Is Mr. Murray here? Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were here.
Butter, I wanted to hear what they had to say.
I'm sorry. I thought you were from USA Waste.
No, I'm here to listen to what they had to say.
Don't you wish, don't you wish you were from USA Waste?
Well,
How the hell that slipped? I can't believe they transferred the title of that and he didn't know anything about a special permit that was, that just, that just, I can't, I can't fathom, I can't understand that in a, my wildest dream. I don't understand. But we will listen to him if he comes in and asks. Certainly he's not gonna-
He's gonna have to get a special permit.
He's gonna have to come in and get a special permit.
Previous, the previous company, there was a trucking company there. He sold the property to Alternative Recycling, and he came in for a special permit. And now Alternative Recycling was acquired by USA Waste.
So they have to come in.
Yeah, they should get their own-
The special permit does not go with the land. You have to re-comply for the special permit.
Even though it's the same use.
Yeah, it's, it's the same use, but we felt that it was imperative that, that it was a different, a different company. And he should get a, get a permit for that. And I thought, I thought somebody, I thought Bob, did he, Bob called them or somebody talk to them?
I had not, I just heard this morning from Wilma that they were coming and I read through it and I said, what? How the hell did that slip through the cracks? They should have known that before the closing, you know?
I've been talking to the building inspector because I thought the old special permit was still in effect. So none of the old special permit would follow.
Well, it could carry over, yeah, but we'd have to talk with him about it. He just can't, it just doesn't pass on. You know?
That's-
You gotta come in and talk to us about it. I mean, maybe, maybe the same stuff applies unless he's gonna be doing something different.
Well, I mean, the, the, the use of the land is the same, obviously, but there's a lot more traffic, and I was under the impression that was the old permit still. So there's a lot more vehicles and all that stuff going on there. There's been a lot of work done on the property, let's put that way. From what I understand, from the building inspector, there's been no permits. And I was surprised that they were suddenly able to put a huge diesel storage facility there.
A diesel storage facility?
They have a huge tank on property, yeah. That was put in right up front.
Above ground tank?
Above ground. I spoke with a fire chief and it's a double, you know, thickness or whatever they call it.
So is that a fuel tank or a water tank or?
Diesel fuel tank, so they can fuel their trucks, I believe. Which I was surprised because I thought that was all considered.
How's the hours of, how's the hours of operation going?
To my knowledge, I mean, they're still following the old permit.
They are.
For the most part, I mean,
Yeah.
I don't sit and watch a clock.
Yeah, something's gonna, yeah.
I can tell you that there were supposed to be no more than 20 vehicles on site with the old permit.
Yeah.
There's more than 30 on site at night.
Yeah, he's gotta come and talk to us.
And there's buses being stored on the property, which the old permit said they had to have, had either owned or leased by Alternative Recycling. No, I didn't remember that. I found the old stuff from the last time I was here, years ago.
Maximum of 20 trucks, 120 containers?
Yep. They paved a bunch of the lot. I don't know if you had to have a permit for that, but from what I understand, they haven't got permits for much of anything they've done. And they're washing trucks outside, which I know for the old permit, they're not supposed to because that's, they leave a water recharge area or something for the town.
They're not separating trash in your alley?
No, but they're storing it in trucks, which they're not supposed to do either. Although, I don't know what you consider trash. It's cardboard and stuff. But they're still being stored outside, which their first permit said they're not supposed to.
They would have a, basically, they're running a, a transfer station.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And I would suggest, not suggest, but I would guess that a lot of trucks have garbage in them too because they're coming back early in the afternoon or late in the afternoon. And I don't know when, where they go to dump it.
That's way too close to the water recharge situation there, for having that kinda stuff going on.
Most of the landfills close around 3:00 or 3:30, and if they, if they're not back, they-
I don't know about Saturdays if they're open. They operate on Saturdays too.
All day Saturday?
I think it's about a half day.
There's hours in there, yeah.
I thought they-
Some days they're supposed to be closed completely, and for the most part, they are. Sometimes you hear something in the garage, but-
Saturdays was 7:00 to 2:00.
But I don't know if there's any place for them to bring it on a Saturday if they're open, is my point.
Now, they, it used to be open till noon time. But I, I don't know what the, you know, where they're, where they take their waste.
Yeah.
Cause they're, this company's out of Connecticut, so I don't know if they're taking it down to Connecticut or if they're dumping it over where Waste Management's landfill is.
It has nothing to do with, with your board, but I've noticed that all their vehicles now aren't even registered in Mass. They're all registered in Connecticut, so that means-
Well, they beat the excise tax on everything here.
But I don't even know if they're allowed to do that. That's not something I know.
That was in the wind when they first bought, though, that they were gonna reset everything in Connecticut.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Taking all the, taking all the-
We're not getting excise money for the town.
Taking all the excise tax out of town and using the facility. Hurrah! Yes, sir.
So, all right, well, I guess he's not gonna show up. Were there any minutes from last meeting?
I did not include them.
Okay. We have any mail to discuss?
There is in the, those, I think right there. Those notices from-
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Other committee meetings. Notices.
It's a legal notice from Whately regarding Mustang Whately Investors, 216 Long Plain Road and Christian Lane. Going some marijuana, I guess. I don't know if that borders anybody from Hatfield.
Outdoors.
Looking if your 500 figures in. It doesn't say, oh, no, renovate a greenhouse for growing cannabis and lease the greenhouse to a licensed marijuana cultivator. This isn't Waitley. Okay, then another one from Waitley regarding a special permit for constructive rehabilitation and reuse of a significant existing bill, building to facilitate approval of a marijuana establishment, of a marijuana retailer on the premises on Thirteen State Road. I'm not sure where that is, but.
That's the thing on the corner where the lights are.
The blinking light is there?
Yeah, I think that's it.
And then the town of Hadley is, that's already gone by. They're, on April second, they were gonna discuss adult use of marijuana establishments. So, I'm, I'm not sure, I didn't see anything in the newspaper about that, what, what transpired with that. So, that's the only mail that we have. Any other business?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Our next scheduled meeting's gonna be May first, twenty nineteen, so.
Jonathan Murray, he thought he would be here, so.
Pardon me?
I'll check on the Jonathan Murray absence because he intended to be here.
See if we can get him here.
And I'll let you know when I do, yeah.
Don't know that yet. Won't know until the May first meeting to see if the, we bring it to the floor to vote on the, the solar panel situation. If, if it doesn't come to a vote, I've gotta stay with it until it does come to a vote, okay? And then, I, I'm not sure how, you will probably be on the board at such and such a time, you know? Or whoever will be on the board, but I think I have to stick around because I was involved in that thing all the way and involved with the vote, okay? So, Bob Wagner was checking into it as to how it was gonna shake out, but whatever happens, I'm not gonna go away, well, I hope I'm not gonna go away within the next two or three months, so be right.
There are a couple of other gentlemen here, Michael Herbert and his.
Yeah, it's, so. Did you have some additional information that you wanted to talk about from the last meeting?
Well, we could give you a diagram of how we're gonna do our thing, but we, we were here just as much as anything to listen and get to know the board a little bit further.
Okay, but you, you, you don't have anything for us tonight or?
They are in process of filling in at occasion and so.
Okay, okay. So, our, our next meeting's gonna be May first, I don't know if you wanna, they wouldn't have enough time to get on that.
No, they'll be in June.
Yeah, okay, so, what do we have? To have thirty days notice in the paper and that sort of stuff, so.
We've gone over that.
Okay, all right.
So, we can't tell you, we have scheduled our community outreach training, which is required by the Cannabis Control Commission. And that's for April twenty-ninth.
And where will that be?
We're going to hold that at the Smith Academy. At six o'clock and the legal notice will be in the, is that April twenty-two, because it has to be seven days before.
Okay.
What project is this? What, what project is this?
This is a, a project, they, they've, they have an interest in a, in a prop, piece of property, a purchase and sale agreement in Hatfield. Apparently, it has a house on it, which one of the owners is gonna live in and they're going to, they wanna harvest or grow marijuana as a, as a, as a grower. And then they would sell that to a manufacturing facility, so they're, they're not gonna, it's not gonna be a retail operation. They're not gonna be any, manufacturing anything, they're just gonna grow it and it would be inside a greenhouse.
Combination of inside greenhouses, some of the greenhouses will be blackout greenhouses so that no light will be emitted if we were to grow in off-season and things like that.
So, they came to the last meeting just to
Yeah.
find out what, what the steps that they had to go through to get a, get a special permit and everything.
Yep, okay, we're here.
The, so that the, the purchase and sale has not been completed, I take.
Well, it's been drafted, we haven't signed it yet.
All, all the.
Yeah.
Ducks online, so to speak, okay, that's fine, all right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Second.
In favor? Aye. Okay, next meeting, May first. Thank you very much for coming.